Speaker.
First public speaker is R.L.
Good evening, council. I'm R.L. Mitchell. I reside at 759 East Linden Avenue, over by the graveyard called Grace Line, where the use of inlet black people be buried there, but my mama and daddy was buried there right at the gate. And I just want to put that on record. So about the situation in Oak Park, we the people appreciate you for saving Oak, you people, you council people saving Oak Park over there on the north side, over there where the job crew up at. And the fireman that always, he retired, but he came back on the force to make sure we Flintstone have the right employees in Flint to make sure we put the right chemicals in the water department over there. And make sure we have the right, what we under, you know the fire chief, you know who he was, because he say, you know, my brother, Jack Allen Mitchell, not Jackass Mitchell. Because he, the fireman, all he got, he got a way of putting his words to make media talk about us Flintstones in Flint and all the stuff like that. Arson. They blowing up the churches now, and nobody found that can, the gas can, but the big dark guy, Woodson, Woodson, and Chief Green came and find nothing. That's how Flint we coming. We got thirty churches and Flint gave that Peterson guy twenty thousand dollars a piece. And we went down to Florida and bought him a big house, over two hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yeah, a million. I can't do too much figuring, but time he got the money, he went and he trying to make every preacher concerned pastor look like okie dokies. Because they a mad, because they don't have to pay no income tax. And the land bank, they just let the land bank have their way, but the land bank can't deal with the churches, because we got militant pastors, some militant pastors in Flint, but they ain't, they ain't showing their cover yet. Maybe they'll show their cover tonight when you push them the wrong way. Like you push Tarzan the wrong way, and he got two strokes, and she ain't here today. First ward, second ward, and third ward. Whoever heard of such a thing? Tried to jump on the eighth ward councilman, and him and his brother, and he had, and the guy that got caught two strokes and he still came back, and the dude getting paid big time, talking about choking peoples. Stay tuned, New York, we might get, we really gonna get paid tonight. I'll ask Mr. Bush's message.
Stanley Wood.
Good evening. I missed you guys the last couple of weeks. I've been enjoying some vacation, but I have been watching online while I was on vacation. I want to say I'm proud that there was five people here to have quorum right at five o'clock, actually four fifty-nine, but we aren't going to complain about a minute. As far as the presidential material here, we don't have a lot to choose from. I know we're stuck in a stalemate, but I don't believe the second or the seventh council members are proper examples of leadership. They're condescending, they're vile, they give off negative energy. I think it's time to maybe give somebody that has the most seniority. I mean, that's the way it works in union positions and a lot of places at work. Maybe it's time to give Ms. Winfrey Carter a chance. I wish the city clerk was here tonight. I was going to bring up her mistake that cost Sandy and Brooke a one-year probation term. I think that's not acceptable. That was a mistake of the city clerk, because she couldn't read something, and she didn't do anything about it. And then, of course, you know, they got their warnings, and they were told to be arrested and things like that. That is not acceptable. I personally will be reaching out to them and giving them a name of a good attorney. Unfortunately, they had a public defender, so that don't help you much. They're just looking for a quick, who can we get to make a plea real quick? So the one thing Judge Maribel did say is he asked them where they lived, and they said they lived in Burton. He said, "Well, why are you going to Flint City Council meetings?" Everybody has a right to be in these meetings. I don't care if you're from Flint or if you're in the outside area. We're all affected by what happens in the city of Flint, the local areas are. I had some words for Lyon Leon, the felon, tonight, but he's not here. But after my wife talked to me, she said, "What you're about to say, is that going to help the city move forward?" And it's not. So I'm not even going to bother saying these things, other than his credibility is horrible. He filed his, I think, tenth PPO order now, and light on page three, when it says, "Have you ever filed a PPO against any other party?" He clicked, "No." Clearly, that's a lie. Last thing, Judy, I know you acknowledged the last meeting, that basically, including all those committees, we're going to limit the amount that the people can talk.
Next public speaker, Claire McClinten.
Good evening, council. I'd like to address two issues. Number one, I would like to encourage the council to go on and pick leadership. We have too many issues that we're confronted with, and I would suggest you consider Winfrey Carter as the senior councilperson on this council. Our previous leadership, our president and vice president, regardless of what the reasons were, they have communicated to this public that they have no respect for residents. We wish we would be treated like Ashley Capital representatives and community first and other big people that come down here, they don't get the police called on them, and none of that, even though the things that they ask for is to the detriment of the residents. But we come down here and pour our hearts out over the frustration through the experiences that we have had, and we get the police called on us. We get arrested, we get put out, da-da-da. I think that is a reflection of the past leadership. Now, let's give the senior councilperson a chance to not only lead this council and reset the things that are done against residents, to put it on a new track. Let's go into a new year with a new attitude, and perhaps the new leadership can help bring y'all together. That would be, that would be something, wouldn't it? And the other thing I wanted to talk about was the failure of this council to have addressed the rate hike of the water back in February. And I did learn recently that the council didn't know about the meeting of GLEWA back in February, where it was one item on the agenda, and GLEWA, as we know, we get our water from GLEWA. And they had a meeting, a public meeting, and it was only one item on the agenda, and that was to raise the water rates, and none of our councilpeople were there to speak for us. And I learned recently that the council didn't know about it. So I would suggest that the council write a letter to GLEWA and make sure they let you all know about the meetings. And then, we using opa funds to pay for the raise in the water. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Last public speaker, Sarah Houston.
Good evening, council members. Sarah Houston, sixth ward. Just want to know, what's the process? I guess, I still don't see interpreters here. You say that it's not in the budget, or we got to put it in the budget, but I see resolutions for the budget, and I may just be ignorant and uneducated. So I'm asking for, what's the process? How long is this going to take? What's the holdup? It's really a simple phone call, so I don't understand what's going on with that there. So please help me to understand that. I'd like to publicly acknowledge Arthur Woodson, who's not here tonight, for providing interpreters at his town hall that he had for cancer. And he didn't even talk to me about it. I just happened to see that on the news, so I was really proud to see that, for him making that effort. I'm also concerned about the multiple fires that are happening in our city, the multiple killings that are happening in our city, and I'm wondering if there's anything being done to investigate an arsonist. There is an obvious arsonist in the city of Flint, and that concerns and worries me. I don't really have too much more to say than that, other than, you know, I would like a response to what is the process, and what's taking so long to make a simple phone call to get interpreters in. Thank you.
R.L. Mitchell.
Hello, council. I'm R.L. Mitchell. I live at 759 East Linden Avenue in Flint, Michigan. For the record, about this food bank situation over out on Flushing, we the people don't appreciate you people giving away our opa money to, they say, "But just put it in the account." But then you want to refuse to give it to them, because it ain't nothing but a money pot. You should have be like Salvation Army, gave about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars back, because they salvation. They supposed to do it, because it's free, Salvation Army in Flint. And talk about three thousand dollars a truck. We got twenty-five trucks over there at Saint Mike's, and you got to pay the people for delivering the food, and nobody, they can't figure out how to pay the truck drivers to deliver the food like in Africa. They got the food, but they put it in the middle of the desert, then when their people go out and get the food, they start to fight and kill each other, and that what they marking them for, that what they want you to do. Fighting over food and the thing that's supposed to save them, is killing them. Just like that was Saint Michael's become a food desert, and it supposed to be all that junk and burning. You see they burning up the whole square neighborhood, nobody, and Chief Green act like he don't see nothing, all that junk? Just like over in New York, drunken mayor doing all that junk up, that strategy stuff and all that eastern side junk, talking about what he gonna do when he get president and all that, and everybody talking that junk up it, talking about Assalamu Alaykum junk. You know, that junk, and everybody gonna be Assalamu Alaykum bowing down to them, blowing towers down in New York again. I'll be back, talking about I'll be back, Bin Laden, and drunken camel jockey junk. Hello, Mashak, say something about that. Yeah, like that old camel jockey come up and blowed up three banks in it, in New York, and nobody say nothing about it.
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell.
What?
I'm gonna let you continue on your time, but I'm asking you refrain from using racial slurs. Please continue.
Oh, yes, ma'am. And another thing about the city clerk, Davina Danner, you, and she talking about the mayor is going to send her to get some more education. Before we must get this year out, she supposed to be scribbling that money out tonight, and the excuse is, "I'm getting educated." That's her excuse by the man, the little man downstairs. And who ever thought of such a thing? I think second ward thought of that. Look at her over there. Now, listen here, lady, you went at McDonald's today, I mean, council, council lady, McDonald's got a problem over there in the morning tab. They ran out of, they ran out of eggs and meat, and they talking about, "Sorry, sir, you don't get food free today." Do something about that, honey, in the ward.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
How do you follow that up? So a few things I wanted to discuss, that I ran out of time with. The Coalition, or the Color of Law Coalition and Thanksgiving. These people do it with all their own money and donations from people. They went out and fed a lot of people on Thanksgiving Day with hot meals, with cold sandwiches for possibly the next day. So I want to give a shout out. I'd say to the girls, but I'm one of them now, so I can't say I'm the girl. But, you know, if you guys see it in your heart and you want to donate toward it, you know, their, their goal is to take care of the homeless or the unhoused, the drug addicts, giving them things like hats, scarves, socks, gloves, meals. We're trying to do some camping tents now and some sleeping bags. We have a homeless problem here in Flint. We have a drug problem here in Flint. Nobody will deny that. Like I told you, I wasn't here for the last few meetings, enjoying my vacation, but I want to say I'm happy that the North Flint Food Market opened up. I'm happy that another resolution come to give them some money. I was happy to see that. I wasn't in favor of it while they were still trying to build, because it was many years in the works, and who knew if it was going to open or not? But now that it opened, I wish them nothing but success. My only concern is there's a reason that was a food desert in that area, and a lot of that has to do with, hopefully, they can combat that there, figure out some way to take care of that. The Saint Mark's vote at the last meeting, I was very disappointed in the second ward councilwoman telling everybody, "Yeah, I'll work with this, and we'll work through this," and then to have you vote no. That was really disappointing. The current leadership, like I said in my first thing, I think is inadequate. They've proven over the last year and a half, almost two years, that they don't have that leadership quality. And like I said, I mean, based on seniority, let's give Winfrey Carter a try. I mean, it can't be any worse. And the last thing is, don't think that you haven't heard anything from INA for the culture that they went away, because they haven't went away. You'll see something coming up soon. They're going to start fighting for the residents, but unfortunately, Judd has to get through his court case, as far as I'm concerned, illegal court case, but, you know, we'll see what that holds.
Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Claire McClinten.
Again, I want to underscore the challenges that we face here in the city of Flint and across the country for that matter. The civil rights that we've enjoyed since, for years, is being jeopardized now before the Supreme Court. Pretty soon, the last vestiges of the Civil Rights Act is being challenged. Pretty soon, we gonna go back to Dred Scott.
Dred Scott decision.
The Dred Scott case, which said, "A black man does not have any rights that a white man is bound to respect." Dred Scott, look it up. But we're also facing the issue of the working class and poor people don't have any rights that the rich people is bound to respect. That's where we heading now. And you all have an opportunity to try to reverse this dinosaur of humiliation, exploitation, and oppression that's going on here in the city of Flint and elsewhere, and you are in the position to change these things. We can come up here and just complain and appeal to your better angels and ask you to stand up for our people, stand up for the residents. You work for us, we forget that. But when the well-connected in this city come up here, they get all the respect in the world. They never get put out. They never are told, "How dare you ask for a seventy-two million dollar tax waiver," and things like that. That's all fine and dandy. But when we ask for sixteen million dollars for rehab homes so that we can get some of these homeless people out of these vacant homes, living in the shadows, they're not seen, they're not heard. And we've got to have a change in the leadership here in this city to even talk about these things. So I'm hoping again that you will consider Winfrey Carter, who's the senior, we not talking about this camp and that camp. You all outdid yourselves last time, because you usually five and four, and that time you was three, three, and three. Wow. You know, you done split yourself some more. So let's give her opportunity to see, can she be a fresh face on the council to lead this council? Thank you.
Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Sarah Houston.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your responses back to me. Thank you, Ms. Mashak, for saying that you were going to lead the charge on Monday. I truly appreciate that. I think that you forget that I'm a sign language interpreter myself. This is my job, it's what I do. It don't cost that much. It don't cost, I did the math, actually, it's not going to cost more than sixty thousand dollars a year to provide interpreters for eight hours a week, if y'all can get at least, you know, I said four hours on Monday, four hours, and I think that's a lot. I think that's doing, that's overdoing it. So don't give me that crap. I get so sick of people talking about it costs too much, but it don't cost too much to buy pens and paper and office supplies. These are people who need access to what's happening in their city, and I am tired of that being your excuse. They're not that expensive. Again, this is my job, it's what I do. Talk to people who don't know, I know. Don't appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
Mary. Last speaker is Rich Jones.
All right. Thank you.
Well, how y'all doing today? My song is over three minutes long, so I just play that late. But anyway, I left one of these up here, my flyer that I have. We're doing a fee sixty on Christmas Eve, I need some support. That's on the flyer, and then also, I'm doing a It Ain't Just You concert. I'm still going to do the No More Tears concert, but I decided, being that this is going to be inside, I need to change the name, and plus, I had a dope design on the T-shirt, so I was like, I'm gonna go and change the name for this one. But the No More Tears concerts will be coming back again this summer, but I'm going to do this one on March the fourteenth, and it's going to be entitled, "It Ain't Just You." And I'm about to play y'all some lyrics from my opening act.
Thank you. I believe you said.
Hello, I'm R.L. Mitchell. For the record, do you, Madam Chair, Candace Mashak, do the lady, Ms. Priestley, the one who got the money up, you passing out the money in Flint and don't want to? Ms. Priestley, I heard you say your mother on Thanksgiving Day took time out to cook you a turkey, and talk about you can't do the business, because after the day after Christmas, and that's what's going on in Flint right now. At Flint Genesis, people's on strike, but supposed to be taking care of sick peoples and stuff, and I want an investigation about that situation out of Genesis. Is it because they moved from Flint out there and they don't know how to deal with Flint peoples who come in there, because they be sick, and they all want to, I want to, because my uncle, he was sixty-seven years old, he stayed on Flint Park, I mean, Flint, on Parkway Street. And then he, my auntie went, and then he moved out there on Copan Road, right over there by that social security, I mean, that thing right there, then my auntie come over there and took him out and put him in the hospital, and he had a girlfriend, and it wasn't nothing wrong with him. Then two days later, I went to see him, he was sitting up in the bed, and he died two days later, wasn't nothing wrong with him. And she jumped on me, telling me what y'all do to my, her man. My auntie still ain't, and she living, she moved in Grand Blanc, Perry Mae, a white. And he was, my uncle's name Bobby Edwards, he worked at Hurley Hospital. And, but he, he dead now, and because, I want you to, I throw, they told me, the nurse that, she asked me how I got out there, I took a bus, and I had to walk from the hospital down to McDonald's, because the bus wouldn't, he must come, so long, then all the lights went out. She said, "I advise you not to come out here, sir, by yourself." And I still hear that stuff ringing in my ear, and you talking about, you can't do no business in Flint, because after Christmas and then after Thanksgiving. And what's with the, I just sound like them, the Middle East peoples, when the Israeli get sick and they gonna call us up, gonna deny them certain kind of medicine before they can die. And nobody, and the beat goes on. And Chief Wob Green ought to go out there and investigate that junk. His name is Bobby Edwards. He walked with a limp, because a mule down south kicked him when he was, and broke his leg, got a medal in his leg, but wasn't nothing wrong. He worked at Great Giant sometime, one time. In the meanwhile, my other aunt, his wife live on Rankin Street. Anyway, stay tuned, America, investigate that junk for me.
Next public speaker. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
First, as a city secretary, I want to appreciate, or just let you know how loud you are, and I want to say I appreciate that. Usually with Davina, you can't hear. Usually with Davina, you can't hear. So I'm relatively speaking, when I talk about this, you know, my time on earth is short, what's left. I don't plan on dying anytime soon. But it's inevitable, I'm gonna die one day. But I want you guys to know that I don't come here to this meeting for me. I come for my grandkids, for my children, for my other family members. I could just as easily sit at home and not be engaged. But I don't like the direction that this city is headed in. December 17th meeting, I was a little disappointed when I heard the vote to have everything go to Special Affairs and then have the council meeting. I kind of understand the reason for it. But why couldn't we have had all three committee meetings and then went straight to the council? It's the exact same thing. You're doing all this stuff from committees in the Special Affairs. To me, again, it looks like just an opportunity to limit the speaking of the public. So you went from five chances to speak to two chances to speak. I would rather have seen four chances, but that's just my opinion. The paid holidays, I'll address this again at Special Affairs. But I think they should just be aligned with the federal holidays. Whatever the federal employees work, that's what the city employees should work. You know, you're a government worker. There's plenty of times in my life that I had to go into work and dealt with nobody in eight-hour shift. But I had to because that was a requirement. Now, I could, again, taking PTO and taking the time off. Councilwoman Johnson, I want to thank you for taking time out of your schedule to help feed the veterans. I read on a post that you guys were in a north end area and feeding some veterans and stuff. Veterans are close to my heart. I'm a veteran myself. I did eight years in the Navy. And I think there's some of the most, what's the word I'm looking for? Almost like undeserving of people that do things for this country. So veterans mean a lot to me, especially the homeless ones. And I guarantee you, some of those homeless we got in Flint are definitely veterans.
Last speaker is Claire McClinton.
Yes, I just want to reiterate that we're getting into a new year. This council need to come together and address the needs of the residents. And I spoke earlier about how mistreated and demeaned and humiliated that we have felt over these last several months with the leadership of this council as a resident. It's just embarrassing. And here we are, a city known for its social justice character. And to be treated the way some of us has been treated is just inexcusable. Whatever the reasons there was for this, let's set that aside and go on and let Jerry Winfrey Carter give her an opportunity to address this residence, the needs of the residents. And maybe, just maybe, God forbid, unite this council. Unite this council with new leadership. Give her that opportunity. And I want to speak to the situation about giving a day off for employees. And with all due respect, Ms. Priestley, your family member was an essential worker. I don't think she's talking about essential workers. So let's just sit back and try to do what's right for humanity. Financially, it may or may not work. But let's try to continue to stand up for the human condition, for human dignity. And again, we as residents who pay the bills around here, remember? Do we pay the bills? Y'all work for us. Y'all, y'all act like you working, we work for you. No. You work for us. And Flint has the reputation of being a humane, social justice community. And we want to see that reflected in the decisions that's made down here. And we do not see that. So what we gotta do is try to do, it's not who, who is, it's not the who, it's the what. What do we need to do in terms of electing leadership that's gonna turn the page and push the issue forward? Push our issues forward. Thank you.